Okay.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the Berlin Mayor and Council Meeting, Monday, July 27, 2020, and as has been our tradition for many, many years, I'd like to begin the meeting with the signing of the Lord's Prayer.
Hallelujah, Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. In this day and age, our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have trespassed against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The lives of a kingdom, the power of our heaven, and the glory of our earth. Amen.
Please, please believe.
For thy diligence doth the life of the United States of America, and to do a republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular session of July 13th, which I believe set a new record as our shortest meeting in 150 years.
It was relatively easy periphery. With that being said, motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the regular session minutes of July 13th. Mayor and Council, by Councilman Foyes. On paper, please say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Okay. Record check, the motion passed unanimously. Jeff is just for chair.
First on the agenda there is the special event request for Adrian Bowen.
Okay, we'll do that.
He's always way up as we speak.
Very good. We'll let you guess, huh? Padeen.
Padeen, how you doing?
Just fine, just fine. And so who knows what item we're on? This is item two. It's a special event application for a Berlin unity celebration on Saturday, August 8th, at Henry Park, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And representing the sponsoring organizations, which is the African-American Coalition of Uta County, is Adrian Bowen. And also, Turan.
Yes.
Turan Whaley. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you also.
Okay. Hoover wants to take the lead here. This is explaining a little bit about your vet, what you, you know, what to do, and what, obviously precautions you're taking, given the current COVID-19.
Right. So we'll start off with the precautions we're taking. At each entry point at the park, there's two. One by adjacent to each fence to the departments right there. We're gonna have sanitizer stations. That's gonna include hand sanitizer and disinfectant wipes. We have temperature guns. We're gonna have it on each one of the entry points also. And advise everybody through social media and word of mouth, if ones have come across, if they've had a call for fever within the last, you know, seven to 10 days, to go ahead and just support the event by spreading the word for everybody to come out, instead of actually coming out physically to the event and whatnot. We also have the three pro football team from Salisbury, East Shore element, they're gonna be there volunteering, spraying down all the things that we use for the activities for the kids, bean bags, cones, everything. They're gonna be going around spontaneously, spraying that stuff and keeping it sanitized and whatnot. We're gonna encourage everybody to make sure they wear masks, they come out to the event. And also, still practice social distancing the best that they can while being at the event, taking part in the activities and whatnot. Our main focus for having the event, of course, is to raise awareness about things that are going on currently, when it comes to the community here in Berlin. There's a lot of things that have happened here at home in Berlin amidst everything that's going on, I guess you would say nationwide or whatnot, that a lot of people aren't as aware about. And the ones that are aware, sometimes are misinformed, and some of that can get channeled into negative things, instead of just doing things that are positive to help, I guess, better the outcome. We also have a lot of resources here. The food banks, they go on multiple, building, multiple churches here that actually have food banks that a lot of people don't know about. So as far as, I reached out to DA Kenea and O.C. County Health Department, see if they can come out there and just also help bridge a gap to resources as far as like health insurance, lots of health evaluations, all this stuff is free. You know, this is right, go there. I know DA Kenea write a, what is it, they write, they basically give you a slip, and within the next forty-eight hours, you can actually go, and it's free, you can get those services provided to you. A lot of people feel like they don't get the necessary help when they're sick or when they're hurt, because they don't have.
Guaranteed.
Right. They don't know about, they don't know about these services. So that's, that's the main cause for the event, to try to bring the community, I guess, closer together. Just have something positive, you know? A lot of things have been going on, I feel like people on the edge, we don't have a lot of huge events that take place, especially in downtown Berlin, quote unquote. So I think it's be something good to have for the community.
Very good, very good. And this is something where I believe that you said folks who maybe have needs, that don't know where to turn and come, and very likely can find the resources or get referrals to the resources.
Correct.
And agencies that can help them.
Correct. And then also, I also forgot, we wanna recognize three individuals, you know, within our community who have done a lot. We tried to focus on, it was easy to find, you know, three people in education, three people in business, so we tried to focus on like a person in education, a person in business, and a person who does a lot of, as far as community outreach. And we wanted to, a lot of times, we don't recognize the people until they're gone, so we wanna try to like bridge that gap and give them some why they're still here. And with that being said, one of the people that we wanted to recognize is Mr. Con Sturgis, who has passed away. Mr. June Smith in Smith Tax, you know, I knew growing up, it's one of the first businesses that I seen. And also, Mr. Burnell Fisher, he had a community harvest basketball program for about three or four summers. He funded, picked the kids up, got them up, made sure their homework was done, checked on their GPAs. He did it for three or four years just off of his income, you know? He's also a father, so I know what it's difficult for him, having two little ones, but he did that. So those are the three individuals that we really wanted to, I guess, recognize.
And I can only say is that Mrs. Con Sturgis, or Ms. Con Sturgis, I knew her, had privileges in New York for a couple decades, and she was just as kind-hearted and determined a lady as you'll ever know. She, she helped people throughout the long shoot.
She was awesome.
Awesome. Very good, thank you, thank you.
Good school teacher.
She told my mother, she actually told my mother.
Good, good, good. That's great. Does, does anyone have any questions for either of these gentlemen, Mr. Whaley or Mr. Beller?
Are you gonna have resources there, like maybe people from the food bank, or people from, I don't know, insurance companies, something like that that you were describing?
Well, I know we have one representative from Pentecost Baptist Church who has a food bank, Ms. Marie Hamid, she's gonna be there. I haven't got in contact with the food bank. Have they answered on, maybe one yesterday, or they free yesterday? I don't know who to exactly reach out to. I know my mother doesn't have spoke to, heard about that, but I spoke to her directly. I had spoke to Crystal Lawrence, who is the program director, housing program director at DA Kenea. I reached out to her, and she not only wants to have, I guess, resources there and information there about their program, but they also have a veteran, a veteran program, it's a Texas DA Kenea, the SSVF program. I know a lot of veterans who aren't working, even before the pandemic, were out of work for various reasons. So now that like, when it comes to getting their benefits, it's even more difficult. So we do plan on having those people actually on site, you know, with forms and with information, again, trying to just help bridge that gap, because I feel like nobody knows what the resources that are available to them.
But Turan, is it, isn't the publicity that goes out about this, and in our official minutes, is there a number, a phone number, a website, or anything where people can reach out and contact you folks, if they do have a service that would be helpful and they'd like to participate?
As far as, as far as us after Mayor Chris Kinsley, we can reach out to, and you can get a little bus through Facebook. As far as the other, I guess, other people who can be a part of it, Pentecost Baptist Church, DA Kenea, I'm sure that they'll, I'm sure if I reach out to them, ask them, not only can we post information on our Facebook page, but they have individual Facebook pages also that you can reach out to and call those individuals and whatnot.
As much as the internet is being used for all kinds of good things, as well as everything else, Facebook ideas great, I'm just suggesting that you have the names that people ask for, but a number they could call, a website, whatever, you know, an email address or something, or website that's available, so that everybody can come together that has the means and ability to do something.
Everything's gonna be free, there's no money exchange.
Right, no, no.
Not at all.
No. Well, we, we, at first, I guess, dealt with the idea of having people there, but then, after we spoke and got information about as far as not being able to do that kind of stuff, because it is a public funding department, nah.
So no benefit?
No, not gonna happen, there's no.
Are we having National Night Out this year?
No, that's no answer.
That's, that's, that has been Council Boll.
From the chief read, the Berlin Police Department has canceled National Night Out for 2020 due to several concerns. The department has started discussions with community partners about working on several smaller community engagements and outreaches. Ideas include back to school, drive-through, late August, a senior cookout in the fall, and a community get-back during the Thanksgiving season.
If I may, the national organization actually strongly recommended that all communities postpone.
This sounds just like what happened at National Night Out. You all have been to the park, you all have been to the park and participated in National Night Out. And although I believe that, that your intent is commendable, it is, and it does me good to see two young black men of my community with, with, with the fortitude and the intention of putting on such a marvelous event, I just feel the time is out of control. You're asking us to support a non-essential gathering of our citizens. And with this pandemic going on, and I hear what you say about the sanitizing stations and that kind of stuff, that's a good thing. But, but I just believe that, that the time is not right for a gathering of this nature. You talk about having games for children and, and, and other activities that's gonna bring people close together and bring people in close proximity to each other, despite your intentions of social distancing, I think that would be really hard to control. And although my heart is with this event, I can't support it at this time. And I think that would be in the best interest of our community is to not have this event at this time.
Can I ask, is it possible, because we made a decision back in Bay to not have any activities through Labor Day, you know, in terms of town-sponsored or town-approved events, and I think that still holds well, and, you know, given what little, little we had, I don't regret that decision at all. Other schools begin to open, and I think that we, there will be a few events, a few selected events, based on what organizations will continue, others don't, it's everybody's choice. But is there any possibility that you could schedule this with the same intent and purpose after Labor Day? Not, not Labor Day, we think, after Labor Day, we figured, it's tourist season, and God bless them. But, but you know, after Labor Day, it becomes more of a, the season for our small-town community.
There used to be an event in the town called the Fall Festival. You all probably too young to remember the Fall Festival. Would you consider, would you consider trying to have your event later on, like in the early fall?
Like in the September, October?
October, middle of October, something like that. Before it gets cold, you know, before people go in for, because it's too cold, but, but I would just like to give this pandemic thing a little more time to work itself out.
I think we definitely would consider early fall.
Yeah. What we had planned as of right now was because of, you know, the timing of everything, and we wanted to bring the community together for that certain reason, because of everything that's going around in the world. We wanted to bring positive to the negative, and we also wanna do it at this time because of the weather. Now, we would like, we have talked about it, and we would like to push it back. If we have to, we will push it back. But we wanted to do it right now, because later on in the fall, if it goes along, that's when the weather starts getting funky.
That's our peak season for events, just in the spring, the spring and fall, not the summer. We have usually one, maybe two sanctioned events that we approve throughout three months of summer. But everything else, and we have more, we have dozens of events, are in the, in the spring and up until early June, and then again, beginning after Labor Day. And not all of them, this fall are gonna happen, but that's when folks here, partly the heat, but it's also partly, folks, at least in this area, make, a lot of them, almost everybody makes a lot of their income in the summer months. So we've kind of stepped back, let people meet their needs through the families and loved ones, and then in the fall, we get together and have multiple events. I, I like Councilman, Councilman Burrell's suggestion, because I think it actually will be more successful. I think it's gonna take time for people to gain the confidence and gain the comfort level to mingle, again, even with social distancing. And I honestly think that for other events and for your proposed event, after Labor Day is a, it's a beautiful one. I mean, basically from September, October, and early November, but you choose the time that works best for you, but I would, I think that's a positive, that's a positive, because why have people, and I think it's fairly fair, some, a number of people, and I can't tell you the percentage, are still either intimidated or afraid to be in larger groups, and that's why we've said nothing until after Labor Day. So if he would consider that, I think he would have, obviously, I think he'd have, I think, counting votes for the cast, but I think he'd have a majority in the council supporting him, and I think he'd have more of the community participating. That's just my opinion, and I'm happy to, I'm happy to share it with you, because I believe that we've taken a little road here. Down Berlin has been cautious, but we haven't been extreme. And I think our cautious approach, given our proximity to a major resort, given the fact that we have lots of people traveling north, south, and east-west in and near our community, so far, not alone, I think we've taken an appropriate course, and I think that our plans for the fall follow those lines. So I'd ask you if you all would consider asking for permission and then coming back later with a specific date, because then you can get comments from the council, and you can get a feel, because my impression is, you've got a really good idea here, just a matter of timing.
I feel the same way, and right now, you've got a few months to plan, but not like you got, you're in a rush. But tomorrow, pick your date, because the dates start moving this fall. So now, it's a good time to pick the date, and then we can come back and resubmit this. If you, if that's your, if you're comfortable with that.
And we really would like for you to consider changing the date, because the event you all have planned, I think, is a good event. And it's one that is needed, and I think it's one that could go over really well, but your time and it's just out of control.
Now, Turan.
Yes.
I think you mentioned something that's really vital, and that's the Facebook page that you have, you have a lot of following there. I think you've mentioned the resources that are a need right now, in present time. And I think it would be smart to try and find a way that we can still help you push those resources to the people that need them, and raise awareness, and that's probably best done right now through social media. So if you do something like that, I think all of us would help try and get that message out, because there are people that really need it right now. So, thank you.
And I'll even help you, I own a printing company in town, I'll help you with posters, designing some posters, some yard signs and stuff. I'll donate that to you guys, to help get that word out, because I believe in what you're doing, I think, I think it's a community. And since you guys live here, you know the community as well, I think it's a great thing what you wanna do. I tend to agree with Councilman Burrell, if someone's seeing what he did, purposeful or whatever. That's all. And thanks, because I know you guys, your heart's in the right place, you wanna do this, I agree with everything that you're doing, but if you would consider moving that back, either way, I'll still help you, it doesn't matter.
I could be an option. I think if you think that that's something that would work, and I personally, as mayor, strongly endorse what Councilman Burrell and the other council members said, if you voluntarily do that, to set the date back, then what we can do is say, we approve the, approve the event and content, and then when you pick a date, you can just come back at that time, have the paperwork filled out, and then you can move forward. And that way, you can start promoting the event, rather than holding everything in the, I don't wanna hold you up like that. But I, I suggest that if you want to do that, we can approve the concept for the event, what its purpose is for, the location, and the date, the time, within the extent of the later time, once you know what that is, as long as it's after the event.
Yeah, sure, we can, yeah, we can.
Great, so we all, all square? Thank you so much, and, you know, keep on trucking here. And, you know, you've got a great start, but use this time to your advantage. Sometimes it looks like a hurdle can actually be a benefit, I think that's the situation. So good luck, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate it. Okay, we're now up to item three on the agenda, and this is a presentation by Berlin Fire Company, David Fitzgerald, who provides us for the last year or so, with the quarterly report. Thank you, David, all yours.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Usually I'm joined by Fire Chief Brian Turnbull in the N.S. Kansas County Highway Department due to COVID requirements, and we're presenting our report, and if there's questions that I can't answer, that's operationally, we'll have this to reply back to the council, which is standard for you. So our quarterly report, which would be April 1st to June 30th, on the red one for fire calls, we started with that one first. So 25 fire calls in town, 29, 1.76% of the calls in town. You see that's a lower number than usual, we've covered 19. We're finding that people are just sort of having accidents here in town, we're anywhere, because the travel is restricted, there's other things that made our calls nationwide calls good now. So the busiest times, days were Saturdays followed by Sundays and Mondays, still the busiest time of the day, seems to be in the afternoons, like 2:00 to 3:00 o'clock, just like this before that 12:00 to 1:00. Our response times, this new reporting system shows, from the time we're alerted to time on the scene, 9.1 minutes, the county has the response criteria, it's six minutes for us to respond, and the majors report more within those guidelines. Actually, they have nine minutes to respond, and we're getting on the scene in nine minutes. So next is the budgetary highlights for the fiscal year that concluded June 30th, and these are still un-audited numbers, we'll close out our books with Mr. Berg, who we have been looking forward to on PKS for further audit. The revenue, down slightly in donation drive, and our fundraisers were up just slightly prior to our closures due to rentals. As you, if you recall, we had the ice rink scheduled the week before, 1319 restrictions went in place, so the ice rink actually stayed upstairs till just a few weeks ago, when the county came and got it. We wanna plan that again if the restrictions are lifted sometime this, this winter. The expense highlights, I mentioned before, in the last quarterly report, we had a gear rack washer that was unexpected repair, and that's to wash the fire gear that the members wear, and it's a requirement, they can't have the carcinogens on their gear, needs to be cleaned before they put it where the next time, or threaten their vehicle, or store it. And we did close out the year with our vehicle maintenance repair, it was 10,000 hours over, because we had some pump valve replacements on one of our engines, or overall, we were, the other budget, we're not affordable. The storage building improvements stayed on schedule, a couple things had to be carried over, because contractors wouldn't come in the building, in the storage building, due to COVID-19 restrictions. On the back page, I did two side, just an update on the 2021 budget, both the county, fire company budget in town. We still need to plan on this future funding, within about three years, working at $300,000 worth of air pack replacements, that's breathing air, we are eligible to get some grant funds from that, but the remaining, we've got a plan for. These need to be purchased all at one time, speaking with our operational officers, you don't wanna buy 10 this week, or this month, or this year, they need Model 1.0, then you wait a year, and the next, you have Model 1.2, and you're in a fire, and you're trying to remember, is this Model 1, is this Model 2, where's my buttons? So, you know, most operationally, budget, place all be at one time, for the safety of operations, consistent operations. Just a reminder that, you know, town cuts do affect other things, especially our state aid fund, that they just, that's the money we get, people call the center AMOSS, you know, that AMOSS, five-week funds, that's based on four visits from the county and town grants, so when those go down, this goes down, it takes another fiscal year for that to catch up, so that's gonna be a hit we're gonna take next year from that, so our five-week funds will most likely go down. And then we'll update you in the first quarter, the effects of the budget cuts, we're still evaluating those, but just like yourself, it's hard to meet new people together because of the 19 restrictions.
Now, David, I do have a question. The breathing apparatus, is there a way that the county, I assume that the other departments are facing a similar issue, right, across the county?
Not necessarily, because there's maybe a different age. We piggyback off, when we, when we purchase, when we use a Scott brand, we purchase all free large contract, either the Houston Gels, the contract, HGC, or something like that, it's, it's a big contract that's purchased, and we're allowed to piggyback off, but it's being the nonprofit, the fire company, so, but in the county, may not be likely that we're all due at the same time, just depending on some of the other suppliers.
How big of a change has there been from the models that you have versus, because that's pretty standard across the county right now, the model that you have, correct?
I believe, and I may have to verify with the fire chief, because I don't, they need to be in the operations, but to my knowledge, Scott air packs are used mostly all through this entire region.
Has there been a big change in the model, from the ones that you're looking at?
Well, we have some that are quite old, yes, the safety mechanisms and getting replacement parts. I know even last year, when they did our annual maintenance, they cautioned us that when they come they cautioned us that when they come in this year, there may be certain parts that they, they can't get. So, uh, these aren't something that are one or two years old. We're talking in 10 years old.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, the, uh, blue sheet of paper, which is the EMS, uh, the calls for the last quarter of the year, 170. In-town calls, 51.5% of the calls in-town. Transports, 116. Non-transports, 54. Our busy days for EMS are Saturday followed by Tuesday and Thursday. And then our busy times are, uh, 12 noon to 1, and again from 7 to 9 in the evening. Response times are averaged 1.46 minutes. Uh, the major supports, so 60 seconds, staffed. It's just impossible for, for the 911 center, uh, to keep track of whether the EMS is being staffed by the on-duty crew, or waiting for my tier to come. But with the 1.46 average, that is certainly meeting the, meeting the standard. Revenue budget highlights for the entire fiscal year. As we mentioned before, our donations look slightly less. Uh, our end donations ended up being a little more. Some came in in that past quarter. And then we did see a good increase in our, in our invoices than what we budgeted. Then our expense highlights, uh, we'd mentioned before in the previous quarter report about our medical supplies. We had, um, some expired items, and things need to be replaced. And then our payroll was slightly higher, and that's due to, we have employees that are, have children, and changed plans. And, and we do the same as a town. We split it 9%, 10% for individuals, 70, 30% for, uh, dependents. So, unless my changes, or has kids, and we actually had, one of our providers had twins. So, I put two kids, I won't put them right away. Uh, that has our, when we say payroll, that's the benefits and everything. Uh, so that was slightly higher. Our fuel was just slightly higher. Our crew incentives was less, so that helped balance out some of those higher expenditures, because COVID-19, you volunteers just, uh, you know, as we've talked before, EMS is definitely not a volunteer interest across the nation. And then when you put COVID-19 on top of it, you really don't have volunteers want to come, because they can't take a chance on getting infected or being infected, and then being quarantined or restricted from their duties to affect their paying job. The other bunch that is the new ambulances, that's all in service since we last met. Uh, we did have to get a $100,000 loan. So, we have a local loan for, for that. We're paying that back using the county allocation, uh, that they provide for, uh, ambulances. For the 2021 budget, uh, we still need to look at, uh, working with the town for the capital replacement of ambulances, uh, because currently all being funded through the county allocation. Uh, again, I mentioned about the, uh, grant, uh, EMS cap highways, explained to you before about cost savings, uh, plan that we have, and we'll be able to use rehab ambulances. It means taking the back part where the patient, uh, is transported, and instead of that being new, you go back to the factory, just be rejuvenated, any safety things, uh, installed, make sure the electrical's good, and just be put on a new truck back, if you'll call that it, before, uh, front parts of the engine, and when it's got the valve, transmission, the motor, would be there. So, he said that would be a substantial , uh, cost savings. Some of the things that we had to do immediately to balance the budget, uh, due to the cuts, is there's never was, well, people at firehouse, they're not a second crew, so there are some extra people at stations. So, any sudden call down, you have to wait for volunteers, or you may be waiting for, uh, another, uh, response from outside agency that the volunteers are available. That also affects fire truck response, because again, there's not more people there. And we'll have to continue to monitor the budget as we go through quarter by quarter, to see where we are with revenue expenses. And next cut would have to be new backfilling personnel. So, when somebody is on sick leave or vacation, uh, that third person may not even be there, they would be out to just the number staffing of two people. Of course, where the results of that should be delayed response time, and waiting for other companies to come in and cover those calls. But we will have, uh, two people there, there will be one instead at all times. There's sufficient funds for that. Trip will be able to check that. Uh, we just, we want to have the staff that the town and the county has had for many years for the fire company.
Thank you very much for that information that I'd like to present, and I think it's very helpful. One thing I just want to remind you, and again, because of COVID-19, it kind of had to be suspended. But we're still looking forward to working with, having you and other officers at the park, and work closely with County Berlin, County, County Ocean City, County Staville, County Oklahoma, and the Ocean Flames Association, in sitting down and working with the county, creating whatever they want to, creating a task force, whatever. Because, uh, this, this emergency services, uh, dilemma is not, is not exclusively a problem situation. It is something where every town's having it differently. Uh, as Ocean City got a nice, uh, appropriate, uh, additional supplemental income from the county for providing services to West Ocean City. But, uh, based on what's happening throughout many other regions of the, of the shore and the Atlantic, we feel that a coordinated effort between county and the towns is an absolute must, or things are only going to be tougher and tougher and tougher. And, and there has to be a fair, and there can be, I think, the fact that we're vetting for reasons. The county has basically shied away from that, just wrote a check, "Here's your, here's your check, now, don't bother us." That can't continue. And in the fall, COVID is hopefully, hopefully, less rabid, and we can get people together more easily. Uh, I would, again, extend the invitation that we did the last time you and I spoke, that we have the Berlin Fire Company, join with the town, and with these other towns, and other fire companies, to talk with the county about the, to look seriously at a coordinated, uh, EMS service for everywhere outside of Ocean City, West Ocean. Ocean City is a unique situation. It is unlike any town, other town in Western County. This also, I think, would be a very helpful to the smaller, non-incorporated towns throughout the county. It's time. The system we've had is developed over many years. The system before that became obsolete. Now, I think we've reached a point where we all want to work together, and if everybody's doing their own thing, it's just not financially sustainable. And it has nothing to do about personality, has nothing to do, you know, personality is anything. We, we would love to see more EMS coverage, but it has to be done in a way which all the assets, both equipment assets, personnel, and the personnel that are needed, are all done, working in unison. It's just, it's time, it's the 21st century, you got to get into it. We want to be very supportive, but the fact that, you know, the funding for, the funding for me for the county even, the funding after that, is all replaced. And we think it's time to have a coordinated, uh, and, you know, a system of EMS throughout this county, with the exclusion of West Ocean City and Ocean City, which has their own, own, uh, challenges and solutions. If I just wanted, yeah, extend that invitation to you again, and, uh, I hope that you pass it on to, you know, to all the other officers and, and the members of the program, I think, super teams, get started again in the fall. I don't know the exact calendar, because like everyone else, we're trying to see how this, this pandemic pans out.
Yeah, I think the county has planned to do some sort of additional planning. One of the things that we'd like to offer to the town as well, uh, we're not included, the fire, or EMS, in any of the town's planning processes, and we've asked before. Uh, we always get, uh, plans and what have you from the county when there's subdivisions, and let us provide. You see, you see the impact, uh, because I know you do it for water sewer, you look at EDUs, and how much water is sewer. But, uh, the fire EMS are included to tell you what that impact's going to be. When you take an empty field and build 702 apartments, we can probably tell you about how many, based on age, how many EMS calls that's going to generate, how many fire calls. Yes, the place may be spread for comments, or may, oh, it's not going to burn down. But we go to some of these places for many elevator rescues and other things. So, that would, I think, help you as Mayor and Council, planning commissions, see the impact, uh, what happens when you take an empty lot into that. So, I think that would help you a lot.
We totally agree. We have no objection to that. But we think rather do as peace deal. We need to take this multifaceted challenge, all in all together. And I think that's one of the things we certainly can work out at our level, at, at the town level. But, but again, I think it's got, it's a multifaceted problem. It's a lot of moving parts. And the fact that we have these individual volunteer fire companies trying to provide EMS services in all different scales, and all kinds of levels of need. And, quite frankly, it's, it's a system that has outlasted its time, and we're moving forward in so many other ways. I, I know that, you know, we all expect there might be temporary slowdown in growth, but I don't think it's a permanent one. If anything, I'm, I'm very grateful for the continued growth that's happening in this town and in our immediate area. And I think once, once all this passes, we'll be back, you know, not overnight, but in a reasonable time, we'll be in high gear. And by that time, we need to have all this resolved. And I'm looking forward to this morning again.
Now, David, before you leave, um, how are your members and the employees holding up right now during the pandemic?
I, I would say they're holding up, holding up well. It's, it's a challenge. It's like your organization here, and your organization, we call it the subject organization, you're used to, uh, being together, and you're not together. Uh, and I do feel that that does not bring camaraderie when you're not together. Uh, as far as the responses, I think they're holding up well. We've been very fortunate that we've had no one in our employment or our volunteers ill, uh, due to COVID-19. And that is applauding them and us in, in sure that we are taking those precautions with personal protective equipment and that type of thing. But I will tell you, it's concerning. We have members that do not come up because they have underlying health conditions, and that can be all sorts of agents, uh, that they just cannot come up, uh, to the firehouse and expose themselves to that risk, as well as others, uh, that they can't do it because of their jobs, uh, taking some of their things. So, I think they're, in terms of, they're holding up well, uh, but it is concerning and troubling.
Are you still okay on PPE?
Uh, we are. We were very fortunate. We had, uh, stockpiled, if you will, uh, from the Ebola. So, we still had suits and what have you that were still in date. Uh, we do get some support from the county, which gets it from the state. It's not a lot. But we have been very fortunate to, we planned ahead and had, had a stockpile. Our EMS would have had the medical supplies, EMS got, stays ahead of the order. So, we've been very fortunate that we've had, uh, supplies and good supplies. We actually invested in some nice protective suits for volunteers and our crew.
Thank you.
David, just hearing about, um, talking about grants and awards, have, have you applied for any grants and awards that are available right now to nonprofit, or SBA small loans, or State of Maryland?
Uh, well, we, we are allowed to, uh, apply to FEMA for public assistance. If we have, we reach a certain threshold, yes, we will apply for those expenses. And we apply for assistance firefighter grant, and those things that, uh...
Just seeing from what I read, there's a lot more available right now due to the situation. Also, Small Business Administration gives a $10,000 grant, non-repayable, to nonprofit. And obviously, you would qualify for that. I think it just, maybe USCPA should book into it.
And I mean, one, one interesting thing that I did find out, and I passed something along to you, and I didn't know that that was strictly carved out for a certain reason. And if you didn't pass a threshold, the, could you elaborate on that for a moment?
Uh, well, like the FEMA Part B, which is the most protective act, if you don't, uh, expend $3,300, you can't apply for, for projects. So, all these have little caveats, that you have to read the fine print. Uh, it's just like the CARES funding, uh, they sent. If you read the, uh, literature right now, and the guidance from lawyers like Page Worth, who are big EMS, there's no guidance. So, they send you a little money, or it's automatic deposit, it shows something you don't realize until the CPA goes to balance your, your account. Uh, but then there's no guidance on how to spend that. So, the, the guidance now from the attorneys is you need to put that in a account until you see what that can be spent for. If that's supposed to be your, uh, personal protective equipment reimbursement, then that would make us ineligible to apply to FEMA B, because you can't double dividend. Uh, so there's a lot of, lot of moving parts with this CARES and, and all sorts of things. So, but, uh, the health department, you know, is managed, manages local CARES money. So, if we need some of that, uh, the finance director said, you know, we can, we can speak to those people.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item four, which is, uh, discussion, uh, on draft reserve policy, or establishing one for the town of Berlin. And leading off the discussion here will be our town administrator, Jeff Fleton.
Good evening. Now, what I want to try to do is take you guys on a trip. Okay, the first, the first document I'm giving you, it has ways and meanings of it. But I want everyone to have an understanding, first of all, where is all the money? If you take, if you take a look at this, this is titled current, and this is the balances as of the end of the last fiscal year. And if you take a look, I call them buckets of money. Uh, and you all can read them from left to right, non-spendable money from other funds, 3.4 million restricted from slots, about 4,000 committed impact fees, over 900,000 signed money, 791, and it breaks it down, 376 for healthcare, and $415,000 that's been assigned to the, uh, to the fund for the community center.
General fund.
All general funds, correct. Okay?
The 921s has committed, where are they committed to?
Their impact fees.
I know, but they're not committed to anything this time, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, uh, that was an eye-opener to me. Natalie and I had a discussion, I don't know, probably four or five months ago. I, you know, I asked the question, where's all the money? And she broke it down in buckets. I, I like pictures of them, it's kind of easy for me.
Jeff, can I just clarify one thing on the committed impact fees?
Yeah.
They're committed in the sense that they have to be used for appropriate purposes.
Correct.
They can't just be shuffled into the general fund
I understand.
to become part of the overall budget. I just wanted to clarify that.
I did, I did notice that.
Let's call them not readily available.
Right.
I've had, I've had more than one conversation regarding that fund with the council. So, um, you give me fairly clear margin of error.
And just in case someone is not familiar, impact fees have been established here many years ago, so that we have income that can then be used to offset impacts from growth and development. And that's what they're used for. Sometimes it's in the immediate area, and sometimes it's in the general growth of the, of the town of Berlin. So, at least everybody knows that, yes, there are money set aside for those things. And when we need them, they're usually big buck items, big line items. So, and that's something we need to do from time to time. I suspect in the next year or two, we're going to have some significant needs for impact fees, because of the developments and growth that we have experienced and, and have been approved. And that's what they're for, just.
Well, and a great example, that Broad Street sidewalk. We used, had money to build that down there, after we had old development on that side now.
So, to uncover maybe it would go in front of you for a decision?
Yeah. It doesn't happen all in that.
Right.
Okay. So, the next document I laid out front of you, again, this is for a session, this is a draft, okay, Resolution 2020, dash, whatever the, whatever the number will be. But, uh, titled Resolution of Mayor and Council of the Town of Berlin, establishing a general fund, reserve policy. And I'm not going to read all the, the pre-ludes I want to call, but I want to drop down, um, on the first page where it says revenues established. Can we... And we, we, when I say we, Natalie and I, um, bounce our heads together, um, you know, trying to come up with a, with a starting point is what I want to call it. So if you go down to where it says reserves established, it reads, "The town shall maintain minimum fund balances according to the requirements set forth in the section. Restricted fund balances shall be maintained as required by granters, bondholders, and higher levels of government. Committed fund balances shall be maintained as follows." I think this is the meat. "There shall be an employee healthcare reserve in the amount of not less than $300,000 committed to the increase in employee health costs."
And if you go down, can you say what's new as it relates to this? It's all new, right?
No.
So then what's not new, can you tell us it is new?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's right. Okay. So the, the healthcare reserve that's been in place, how many years?
Um, I want to say 20 or more, way before my time.
But that's currently in a budgeted item for, it's, it's all on paper, but it's just not in our reserve snapshot, right? Am I correct about this?
The, the reserves are not on the budget.
Right.
We don't post reserve balances on the budget.
Well, what I'm saying is that in here, rather, if this were to be adopted, we would then see this amount show up in this graphical representation. So this isn't just reserved, this is just...
That's right.
I'm sorry. Nice when you spoke out of turn.
And there's, there's, I'm, I'm going to jump on a turn too. After we have a discussion regarding this, I'm going to give you, I want to then step into the discussion about whether we're going to write off, forgive the monies from the sewer fund back to the general fund. Following that discussion, that flow chart that I gave you, I want to give you what it looks like proposed with, what we're proposing with reserve policy and the...
He was here before that.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, I think that, I wanted to your question.
Thank you.
I also like that.
How you do it?
You will never see it, I think.
We're on C, the unassigned fund balances shall consist of the balance of all amounts not otherwise expended in the number or reserve. Reserve categories, again, I think this is the meat. Town shall transfer $100,000 a year in the unassigned, uh, fund balance to pay minimum fund balances according to the requirements handed orders set forth in this section. There shall be a budget stabilization reserve in the amount sufficient to ensure the continuity of town general fund operations for a three-month period. Where do we come up with a three-month, uh, savings, if you will, came, I do believe from, from...
That's a, a common practice advice.
Right. Um, and that's through the, uh, like I just told from way back, like, the, uh, PKS, not PKS, um, TFOA. Number two, there shall be a capital reserve in the amount of $100,000 to pay for unplanned but essential capital projects. Number three, there shall be a debt reduction reserve in the amount reused by the established by the town debt service principal plus interest in any outstanding long-term debt instruments for one year. And before there shall be disaster recovery, recovery reserve in the amount of $250,000 to pay the town's cost of emergency taxpayers to, or replacements of parts of the town's infrastructure damaged by a natural or major disaster. Or be, or prevent further damages to life or property.
Now, now, uh, two, three, four.
Yep.
That's in addition to one.
Correct.
So they're not included in one?
They're all, they're all separate buckets. Okay? We're filling any of the buckets, Natalie?
So the first chart is basically where it says general fund balance. It just won't, where it says current, and it has two big green squares and two yellow squares. That's what we currently have in place. With the policy as a guidelines, it's not necessarily we can achieve right in a moment, right today, and be here. It's something is to look forward and move forward to have as a proposed squares of yellow, what we have, and green would be something that the policy discussed right now. Jeff just read the paragraph one, two, three, and four. So if you just want to take a look and look at the proposed.
Jumping forward.
First, I want you to define, define for me non-spendable, non-spendable, restricted committed, uh, selling.
Okay, so non-spendable amount, and we're looking at the current. It's the fund, inter-fund transfers. So basically, it's a sewer fund what owes back to the general fund. It's IO, you know. It's included in the bottom line of the reserve amount as the fund balance. But it's not available to spend because it's a simple transfer, borrowing, whatever you want to call it. It's not money in the, in the, in the bank.
It's a fair, simple way to explain that it's money we loan from the general fund to our one or more of our utility funds, that the utility funds then over time pay back to the general fund.
Correct.
And sometimes it's very little, sometimes it's a lot.
So that's non-spendable amount.
Non-spendable because...
It's money we owe ourselves.
It's just accounted for, but it's not money coming back.
Correct.
It's, it's money you owe ourselves, it's something there.
You, you, you spoke for a while, Councilmember, uh, Drell, at a, uh, budget session. I remember you said, uh, you wanted to know about the M2 monies. And that's what this is.
That's what they, that's what they used to refer to after.
That's right.
Yeah.
So then we have restricted, basically restricted by somebody else outside of mayor council. And that would only category fall into is the slot revenues because they're basically restricted to a certain purpose and not readily, readily kind of spendable on everyday basis. So the slot revenues as of right now, today, were assigned and restricted to the police deputy, which is the police department.
Due to paying off the debt of the new police station. That's where all our slot money goes each year, paying that down. And then approximately, Kevin goes and does this for two or three years, in approximately 10 years, that debt will be totally paid down. Prior to that time, the year or two before, the mayor and council that time will have to determine what they want to spend slot revenues on, given the restrictions and guidelines that are dictated by the state.
Correct.
It's basically for public safety.
So it's basically restricted by...
For public safety, my man. Okay?
Then we have committed impact fees, which we just talked about a minute ago. It's, it's town, mayor and council committed for impact of development of the community. So they're not committed at the moment. We're just setting them aside for a specific purpose. And then we have assigned monies, which could be spent by you just simply authorizing to spend them. And they are health insurance and community center as of today, what we have. And then everything else what's left after in general fund is unassigned fund balance.
Now, I want to, uh, the strictly slots monies, those average, since we've been receiving those, approximately about $25,000 money. It's not that now with the COVID, we've averaged about $25,000 money. Sorry?
Okay, no worries.
Uh, healthcare, the healthcare, uh, monies and the community center monies, they both are in and infiltrating the account.
Now, I see that the one that's current has a $376,000 balance in healthcare. And then the proposed would reduce that amount to 300,000.
It's not necessarily to reduce, it's not to drop below 300. The, the policy reads not less than. So the specific account varies per se according to our, um, HSA card usage. So it never drops below 300, but on a certain day, it could be 376 and then 350, 360. But as we go replenish, make sure it's not below 300.
Okay, and then when we do the budget, can we get a document that shows a summary of this before we start entering into the discussions of department head requests and the utility fund? I think this is helpful information that would be nice to get early on. Is that something I could use on?
Sure.
And you get that, we'd have balanced at that time, which again, changes month, a month, certainly. But, and then we get projections, we're going to bunch them up as the finance department thinks that my final numbers will be, they're usually pretty close. But I think it'll be, again, for everybody's benefit, better to understand all these breakdowns of these general fund balances because it's not just one, one bottom line. It's all these requirements that are required by law and by fiscal prudence that we just have to do.
Okay, so just to clarify, this is not, the numbers are not budgeted or budget numbers. It's two different things going on.
Right.
Budget is, we operate on the balanced budget. Revenues minus expenses, we have to balance. If there is a negative amount that we have to cover, meaning approved expenses or introduced or adopted is higher than received revenues, then we, in the past, advance from reserve to cover the major capital. This is something totally different and separate. That's our year-end closing balance of a general fund. So, uh, the, the snapshot is of, hopefully, I mean, helpful, but it's not that we will put it on the budget or increase the budget or reduce the budget because of the reserve balance. I just want to make it clear.
Well, yes and no, because if, let's just say that healthcare came in at 250 after a fiscal year, and we're looking at a new budget, according to this policy that's being proposed, we would need to find $50,000 to replenish that fund. So that would be a budget issue. Am I right?
Right. Yes and no. Um, the healthcare 300 that we're talking about reserve is there for us to negotiate what if it's way over double the price.
Right.
So we always have amount budgeted each year as we get. The 300 is in reserve and they count in case of emergency.
What happened, a number of years ago, real quick? Um, I think it goes back to around 2008 when Tony Carson was here. Your, your rates that you get on a healthcare quota are, a majority of are out of control. And what happened back in 2008, if I remember correctly from what I, what Tony and Chair would be, what I've read, we were, I'm going to make these numbers up, the town was paying $450,000 in its health insurance for the employees. That particular year, uh, the, the increase that the town took, um, for renewal, it was, it was a, a, it was a double-digit figure and it was 30-some percent, if I remember. And that, that kind of threw things out of whack significantly because you don't plan for a 30% increase. If you think back for the, under the last 10 years, each year we've been very lucky. We, we budgeted for healthcare a 5% increase and we've been very lucky. We've come in for 10 years and it worked from 0% to 4%. And the year you get your fingers crossed, that 30%, how much are we going to do?
And, and I realize what you're saying, but what I'm, I'm only using healthcare as an, as an example. But what I'm saying is that if we enact a policy about reserve with these goals and benchmarks in place, when something gets below that level, we have an obligation by the policy that we adopt to refill that bucket. And what I'm asking is that if we have that information at the start of the budget, we know what that pot of money needs to be refilled at. And it, it helps us make good decisions, I think.
So would not that be a budget concern to that person?
It would be a budget concern if you decided to advance money from reserve and cover a specific expense and then project to replenish it. But if you have an established healthcare reserve as of today, and for so many years, we've been fortunate not to advance from it, we'll always budget the amount that we need. But if we would see mentioned 30% or 40% increase, we would definitely go in to the advance and from the reserve of a healthcare, then have a plan to replenish it later on.
Because another place, I mean, you could look on and on, but another place is like the state retirement system. If those actuarials come off, we could be in for another swing in a given year as well, right, Jeff?
Interesting, all reserves including, and again, I understand your, your, your...
Point, yeah.
The thing is that the healthcare reserve is something that at least is somewhat predictable and it can hit, kick you once in a while. But, uh, the disaster recovery or some major piece of equipment, and if the utilities go down, we're not talking few tenths of a thousand dollars. Usually we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. And, uh, and that's why that recovery fund has to have, or we're proposing, has to have at least $250,000 in it, just because when it's needed, it's needed in a big way. And I think this is, the thing is, what we're trying to do here is establish a policy where when things go bump in the night, we know we have the reserves on hand. And I think that's one of the things that we need to understand is we're not broke. It's not that we don't have the money, but the monies we have are designated and obligated for a variety of situations so that come, come what may, that, that we can meet our obligations. And I think that's, that's part of, you know, when we go, when we have to borrow reserves against the general fund, that's usually a temporary thing and sometimes it's hugely big. And then we pay it back over time and that will be the next policy we'll, we'll discuss tonight.
I mean, you, you think about, you think about the last few years, where have our major, where, where have the major expenses, expenses, expenses happened? And I think about two years ago, we spent, you know, roughly $600,000 on two vehicles, a trash truck and a, and a recycling truck. And where did that money come from? You, you get the budget for it, obviously, but let's turn that around. And let's say, let's say that today, I hope it doesn't happen, more and more than the trash truck goes to poohie and the recycling truck goes to poohie, where's that money going to come from? What will happen?
The $16,000 of unassigned spendable.
That's right, you're stretching.
Yeah.
So are these numbers going to happen overnight? The answer is no. Do we know that? But right, right now, do we have a plan? I mean, when we, you've got a disaster recovery of $250,000 you want to assign into an account as well as capital reserve of $100,000. You've got to find $350,000 somewhere, you know, that's the only way you can do it, right?
But it's not, but this is something as a guidelines, as a goal to move forward. As a perfect...
At least what we're committed to, we say, okay, we're committed to in the future, assigning $350,000 of new money to go into accounts.
But it's not going to happen in this budget year or next budget year. It's, it's something that we have to work towards that for the future as, to help us to have those...
FY21, uh, the number escapes me, but we put, how, how much, how much money in this FY21 budget to be putting to reserves?
If...
If the budget you're in.
If the utility, if the utility fund is closed and as projected with no emergencies, we should have 150 going back to general fund.
We have the budget we're currently operating under right now. And based on last year's numbers, you got to say far, that's what we think we can do looking forward.
And that 150...
I remember going over the discussions, 150, but that goes to where?
We would, we would assign that to one of this...
It goes to the unassigned spendable.
Right, and then we can transfer and put it to one of the reserve buckets. We call it bucket squares.
Now, I'm talking 150,000, because you know, everybody's usually shorting here. We're saying 150, and I'll talk $150 from the...
No, 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 I think...
I don't, you know, we got us...
Never, 150,000.
Hopefully, we want everybody to...
So then you would have the right either to commit it, assign, set it to the debt, set it to the healthcare community, add it to, or transfer. It would be in within mayor council powers.
Follow me, ask a question today. I mean, the, the, there's a ways and means to this. And, and I, I feel pretty strongly about this. Yeah, you're, you're committing something, that's a fact. But let me ask you a question. I wouldn't hear when this happened. Most of you all were. You committed at some point, five years ago, 10 years ago, whenever that was, you committed adding $300,000 in healthcare. You committed to putting $415,000 for a community center. Why'd you do that? Why'd you do that? You gotta have the money at the sale.
Yeah, you gotta have the money.
That's right. But you didn't, but I, in all fairness, everybody in the room, we sat before and discussed about needing money to do X, Y, Z. And, you know, the topic was put out there. It's there if you uncommit from this or this. And I know, what I recollect was you weren't gonna uncommit. You were, you were fixed and that money's gonna stay where it's at, where it is. I think it was a sound decision.
But I guess, what is the point of making decisions, planning? Any, if we're just uncommitting every time that something goes bump in the night? It's no different than a family budget or a business operation. There are things you can predict and there are things you're not. But you don't stop planning for the future and investing in the future of the town just because life can happen.
But don't get me wrong, I'm all for establishing these reserves, which is, I've got it, it's wide open. It's gonna cost money. We gotta commit to down the road coming up with that money.
We're just thinking about building our reserves, John.
I think it's a great idea.
And this is just a goal that we have to work slowly. It might, I hope it will take us a couple of years. It might take us more than that. But whatever it takes us, and if we have to adjust something on a policy later on as we go, it's perfectly fine. But this is something just for discussion to see that it needs to be in place. It needs to be discussed and acknowledged that we need to move forward as a goal to that.
Now, I think that this is a good attempt, but I also look at it as sometimes if, we have to set achievable goals, I think. And I really think that if we were really good and in a decent financial position to be able to fill these different buckets that are recommended, it would be great. But we're not. And I think that the first thing that we should focus on is achieving that benchmark that the GFOA says, which is three months where I think 16% of your operating budget in reserve. And we don't have it, we have $16,000. So I think that this policy could be much more simplistic and act as a better guide by saying, hey, look, we wanna see that level of achievable goal and fill up this unassigned spendable so that we have that cushion there. And then we can start looking at the different baskets that are proposed. That's what I would like to see. Something simple, that's easy to follow, that we can set a goal for and actually achieve. My fault.
Look, I don't have a problem doing the disaster recovery, the special capital reserves, I just wanna make sure. I mean, it looks like to me when you read this, this is something we're gonna admit. Not just a goal, it's a promise.
Well, yeah, but that's the bigger thing. Can you legally bind future councils to this document? I don't think you can. So, I mean, it's a goal, it really is. We can call it whatever we want, but it's a goal.
It's a goal, it's a plan.
Hey, that's fine, I think that's a great idea, it's a good plan.
Yeah, it's a good plan. Tell me about the non-spendable from giving half of it.
We're not getting into that now.
And we had a couple of questions about that, because this is all, right?
Yep.
We went from one item to the next. As I, I just wanted to see here, the questions that were submitted for the meeting. This is, the reserve policy should not require any increase in taxes to be accomplished. That's true. Reserve policy has nothing to do with the tax rate in the past or currently or in the future. Again, it says, please explain again why the sewer fund balance money was borrowed from the general fund? And whose decision was to do this over four years? That, go ahead.
Well, I think it's the item that we're gonna discuss right now, but to answer this question, the sewer fund balance did not happen over four years. It just happened that the fund was operating at a loss. And to balance the fund and to close it at the end of the year, we had to transfer the money to cover the expenses. But it did not happen over four years. It's much longer time, right?
I'd say probably somewhere between eight and 10, something like that.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's when we had the major upgrade to the system. Yeah, okay, so then, okay, this is something I think we're getting ready to go into. What would happen is the sewer fund balance was, that was borrowed from the general fund, wasn't paid back and was forgiven in full. It was obviously a bad decision on someone's part to continuously borrow without any plan to return the money. So why now? Okay, so first of that's why we're having this discussion now, so we didn't have a policy. When these emergencies happen and things, you know, are much a bigger problem or, you know, expense than we were told they'd be, then the idea here is to have a policy on how much, after we borrowed from the general fund, how much of it has to be paid back and how much can be written off? Because it's money, literally the downers.
Well, the write-off, Mary, just to add to that. I'm not gonna sit here and make, and say that, you know, writing off zero or writing off half or writing off all of it. What's the best idea? Because I don't have the best idea. The approach and how I took on this, you got the $3.4 million me-too monies to go back, okay? Honestly, is that something that's attainable? Okay, so, you know, the logic that went into this, from my perspective anyway, try to do something that's attainable, establish that policy and make it happen and replenish the general fund. The reality on something is that the sewer fund can operate with profits, okay? So the good news, the good news, real quick, we finished out FY '20. And if you take a look at that, what I just gave you, you take a look at FY '20, sewer fund, there was zero money in the general fund, to the sewer fund. That's good. So.
It was no moral.
No moral. That's right. So the good news is, the good news is, was it a fluke? I hope not. Projection-wise, it doesn't seem to be. But the good news is that the sewer fund's operating in black. But what's not there is, what do we do if sewer plant goes to poohie tomorrow?
Or realistic problem is, what do we do if the sewer fund needs to be expanded?
Right.
So what do we do?
Well, what can we do?
Well, where's?
I'm asking the question.
My understanding is, hopefully, that's what Jean Holloway's gonna tell us.
Yeah, but we can't be naive to think that she's gonna have a solution. I mean.
I don't know, any more money you're gonna have to spend is gonna have to come from somewhere.
Right.
But I also wanna share, I wanna share.
I agree, but.
And again, this goes back, predates me by a number of years. Back in the, in the early 2000s, when the idea was to expand the sewer plant. We're getting off track here with this, but I think it's something good to get out. That, I think it was URF?
URS.
URS was the organization that came back and said to the town, you need, you need a realistic number to support all the infrastructure upgrades. You need to sell X amount of EDUs, okay? Whether that's a, was a good number or not, I don't know. But I can tell you, looking back, it wasn't a good number. But also what happened, we had years where we were plugging along, hitting those numbers. Then we had years where you weren't hitting those numbers at all. So I look at this as a brain thing. This year, we're gonna, we're gonna hit some serious EDU numbers, I can tell you that.
And the difference was, we raised the sewer water rates so that it would cover the operating.
The operational side.
Based on the projections we were given. We didn't raise them just for fun, but that's, that's what, that's what the adjustment. And ideally, if we'd known they need been raised earlier, we could've done it three or four years ago.
But tell me now, now the sewer fund is self-sustaining.
Operational.
Operational, self-sustaining. What is it going to do to that? Meaning that good situation, when we ask them to pay us $1.7 million, when we put them on a schedule to pay us $7.1 million. Are we gonna have to increase those rates again to pay ourselves?
That's not the plan. The plan is to reduce that note and have a schedule to repay, let's say, $150,000 a year back to general fund so we can basically commit this money or assign the money on the general fund as a repayment back and start building a little stronger reserve of the general fund. And the same time, the study that we're going forward with is to look, what is the capital needs and what the capital improvement will, the power, the wastewater plant will need in five to 10 years. So then we can build something separate as a capital item for the fee for, it's not gonna be an increase in fee to operate to have money back to general fund. We're talking about the situation as of right now, as it's operated already.
We figure this year, this year, if the plan goes as is, with a one-budget, $150,000 is going back.
Uh-huh.
So if we go.
Going back to the general fund.
That's right.
I think, take for granted, everybody knows what.
Right.
Back in 14.
So if you have, at the same year this year, there's another $150,000.
But to Dean's point, if we're using that money to pay ourselves back, there were, when we were presented the report with adjusting the rate, that was just to offset operational costs, which you've mentioned. But it does not take into consideration the capital expenditures and the capital improvements that need to be done. So I think where you may have been going is that if we're paying ourselves back, that, am I right? If we're paying ourselves back at a rate of, let's just use $100,000, could that money be better served in investing in the capital things that truly need to be addressed?
And just writing it off?
I think that's what we're hearing, but.
A turbo roto? And that's, that's what discussion tonight is about. I mean, what, what philosophy, what strategy you wanna use about the money you owe to ourselves? So I'm not talking individual, but what the utility funds, in this case, the sewer fund owes significant money to the general fund. The utilities are supposed to be self-sufficient. And when they aren't, then they have to be subsidized temporarily. And then we go back to, you know, adjust the rates, get everything back in line, and then, then we go forward. And that's what tonight's critical decision will be. And, you know, there isn't any like one strategy every county has to do and every municipality. Every county has to do what they think is right in their particular financial circumstances. So I'm glad I pointed that out because that's a decision that's before us.
Well, in our case, if you took the whole three-step, you took the whole thing off. Other than it does it, right? If you just reset it out.
It's three-four, right?
Three-four.
Three-four.
Two, two, four, four.
It just takes the balance sheet down that much money.
It does. It makes your balance or it makes your general fund balance or your reserve down to nothing. And then the question comes, how are you gonna sustain that three months of reserve policy that we're trying to move forward as advisable on the general fund? So, yes, there is a decision to write completely off or there is a decision to write half of it or 1.7 as I proposed in the memo, just to take a good number and have an attainable goal for sewer fund to repay that. Because sewer fund did borrow. Sewer fund is enterprise fund, is operating as a business, it can make profit. Non-for-profit is our general fund. So if the sewer fund borrowed money for operational capital and et cetera expenses over 10 years, I think just writing it off and move forward, it's great. But I think better off is having the rescheduled repayment so then we can look at proposed structure of general fund and assign that 100 or 150 would be available and assigned to something on the general fund as a repayment back. Yes, we're paying back ourselves, yes, we're doing this, but in the same time, the borrowing happened and.
We didn't know if it'd be able to pay back, no, I meant to, no, probably not. I mean, wait, you've, you've.
I, I'm proposing, I'm proposing to have a repayment plan.
But I mean, it's not that easy, then all your lives are paid back to general fund.
Do you have a, do you have a payment plan?
Simply having a half of it written off and the rest is assigned to 10 years. Inter-fund loan table that in general fund, simple, just very simple.
So again, a lot of this is, where do we go from here? And so, you know, obviously, now the finance director made a proposal, working closely with the town administrator. They've basically spent, certainly white old hat, but, and again, it's been discussed, the white old are somewhere in between this, it's another possibility. And there again, I think, in trying to balance all these different needs, is that, you know, it's kind of like, it's what kind of balance sheet do you wanna end up at the end of the year with? Because either way, we have to meet our obligations. And we all need one, which that's it.
PKS, what's your thought on this?
The advisor last year audited financial statements and our management letter was, make a decision whether to reduce the balance or to write it off.
It reads.
But that wasn't, but that wasn't just last year. That was last year and the year before, and the year before.
It reads, it says, management should determine the amount of the inter-fund loans that the town has the intention and ability to repay to the general fund. Any amounts that do not meet the criteria should be written off. Period.
Another question that I have, we, in this memo, it says, the sewer fund balance is page two, number five. Sewer fund balance due to the general fund as of June 30th, 2019 is $3.4 million. And then the information that we were given tonight that says current, it says non-spendable due from other funds, $3,431,000. So what money was borrowed by other fund?
Stomwater.
And what amount is that? Is that $41,000, $31,000?
Yes, we have a transfer scheduled for 50 caps to become stonewater. So that's, this is just as of audited numbers. This specific memo talks just sewer fund.
And Dean, I think we talked about this a little bit when we were going over the reserve policy. But in a given year, if enterprise fund ends up in the red, what happens?
You have to balance the fund. You can't close it on red, so we're borrowing from general fund or we would borrow from another enterprise fund except the lecture.
And how is that done?
Through the inter-fund transfer, which what we have right now. Sewer fund owes general fund in the transfer, $3.4.
So is that a budgeted item?
It is a ending financial statement, reserve balance or fund balance amount. It's not budgeted amount.
So who authorized?
Well, how would you close your checking account if you have so much operating expenses and you don't have much revenues coming up? It's, it's inter-fund, but it's all woven together. It's not authorization needed. You have to close the fund to balance at the end of the year to create audited financial statements.
So if a fund were to end up in the red, say, $50,000 at the end of the year, who would authorize the money to go from, and I know it's within the same fund.
It's governmental accounting. You have one centralized balance. And so each fund is armed. If one is lacking, it helps from the top. But the top is what we have as a main bucket.
But what I'm, what I'm asking is.
I think what you're asking, if I may, for FY '21 budget, how much money is going, is going back?
We've budgeted a transfer from sewer fund to general fund of 100.
$100,000?
Please use.
I'm sorry, $100,000, $100,000 and $50,000 from stonewater to general fund.
Do you approve that in the budget?
In the budget.
That's right.
But what I'm asking is, at the end of the year, when the account needs to be closed out and it's in the red, however much money, and we need to make that up, who authorizes that amount?
It's an audited financial statement. It closed, you closed, we closed the year for government, it's always been, it's not an authorization form or a decision-making form. You close in the year for the whole town.
Okay, so let's go to the sewer fund. Because I've really tried to understand this and I, I can't figure out. I have some questions. And what I'm wondering is, so we get a budget that is presented, we work through it together, and if at the end of the year, those numbers are not balanced, right? In the red would be unbalanced.
Okay.
How does that get made up? And that's what I'm trying to figure out.
From understanding that it's always been, again, because it's something we've learned together, is that on the last day of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, that if there is an amount owed by, by utility. that if there is an amount owed by utility funds, then automatically there is an entry, an accounting entry that covers that from the general fund, and that's how that happens, and it happens on the last day of the year.
Pretty much, yes.
And it's not something we can neither authorize it or unauthorize. And that's how part of this, part of the reason.
Right, but...
But so the same thing happens with revenues. We've predicted, we are projecting to collect X amount of dollars in revenues, and then something happens and we don't collect those revenues. So expenses are within the lines, but your revenues did not come in, so we're still in the red. It's not just expenses.
So is there a way to tell what the money was used for, like what it offset?
For the sewer fund?
Yeah, for the $3.4 million, could we see what led to the red for those fund, for those fund year?
It would be a combination of not enough revenues collected to operate and capital unpredicted expenditures.
No, I think in the capital side, I'm taking, just correct me if I'm wrong, that the expenses related to the new spray irrigation, I guess, creation of it, setup of it, was significantly greater than what we were told it would be, and that the rates that we were told are recommended by the URS study were not sufficient to cover the operation cost, so it's two things happening at once. And that's why they didn't show up at the same time, because one was slow and the other, the operations, they brought them way down, but they still, they still were higher than anything they originally projected when we authorized the wastewater spray irrigation expansion.
So the part that really led to my confusion was, I looked down at the piece of paper and I said, all right, what decisions did I make that led to the borrowing while I was in the chair of 2018's numbers of $612,000 and some change, and 2017 of $859,000? So I went back and tried to figure out, at what time were those decisions brought before the mayor and council? And I couldn't figure it out. And I tried to look at the budget, and I tried to figure out where these numbers were presented as something that we were in the red for, or something that we were doing that was incorrect. And I couldn't find it. It doesn't mean that it's not there, I just couldn't find it. So what I'm asking is, can we, can we figure out at what time those numbers were presented to the mayor and council?
Each year, each year when the audited financial statements presented.
But that's after the, that's retroactive.
When I was working, I had to maintain a budget. I did not have the flexibility of getting to the end of the year and writing stuff off. So that means I had to monitor and project what, where I was going to be at the end of the year. Now, if I was projecting a deficit, I had to change my operation. I had to change my operation to compensate for that deficit during the year as we are projecting a deficit. What do we do to try to mitigate that and not having to borrow from two or whatever it's called at the end of the year? Or do we just let it go on with the expectation that at the end, we'll do it from the general fund?
Well, I know the last two years, to answer your question, capital has been pretty much nonexistent. There's been a lot, a lot of needs, wants, I shouldn't say wants, a lot of wants that haven't happened. The needs, the bare basic needs of that, so I can tell you that over the 10 years that I've been here can mount, as we've spent the last couple of years, for capital has been significantly, significantly less. But that's got to stop at some point, too.
Yeah, but when you strike a budget, it is the expectation that you live within that budget. And you as the manager or the director have the authority to do what you need to do within your budget to make, to get to the end. And if that's changing operation, if that's cutting back on whatever, I think that's what needs to happen, instead of having the expectation of getting to the end and being compensated by the general fund.
And just the last two years, the first two years we've been notified, that's why we did it last year, and that's why we're, again, looking at this year, because that step never happened, never happened. I mean, otherwise, we would have been probably almost going, wow! But it's one of those things that now establishing a policy, I think, and we need to make that part harder, is that projections for where we'll be, we need to know during the budget process. And frankly, the first we would hear about anything would be the audit, which is usually, you know, October, early August, or even November, which is well past the quarter end of the year. So I think that has to change, it's something that, you know, it's always done that way, but is there a way that we can...
Well, in fairness for a second, I'm not here, I'm going to say what's on my mind. If you take a look, if you take a look at page two of this sewer fund balance report, I think we all know, it's pretty clear that as of June 30th, 2019, the new due money that's going to go back is in $3.4 million. But if you go all the way back to 2015, it was 1.7. So I mean, this new due money went, well, beyond 2015. So for my role of overseeing here, again, this is not directed at any of you all, but for my role of overseeing here, in 2015, and we know that we got, we got, you know, half a million dollars, that way it happened in 2015, or 14, or 13. I'm just, I'm on my own as why it wouldn't stop. Do you agree? So allow me to add here, because it's never, I mean, it's never brought up during any budget process at all.
But, I mean, how, if the, if the, if the sewer fund was underperforming, we could have something changed to sewer rates five, six years ago.
You look, you look right here.
Yeah, now is...
Now it's white.
But, 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 let me say that, 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 that I'm more concerned with, with, with... And we need that history, but, but we're here now.
That's right.
We're, we're here now. How we got here is, is important, but it's not worth dwelling on. What needs to be dwelled on is how do we go forward and do better? This is what I would like to discuss. I think what you have presented is, is food for thought, and, and I think it's going to put us going in the right direction, but it is not the all. It, it, it is not the all. Yes, we need these, these policies and procedures and this understanding of this plan going forward, but we also need an operational part of that, that's, that's going to support this. So, so, so if we're going to have a plan, it needs to be a complete plan with these policies in place and, and this look toward the future, but it's going to take day-to-day operations to get us there.
Well, one difference, so we just started having these quarterly reports from the finance department after we discovered that, you know, we're about to, oh, wait a minute, we have a constant deficit in the sewer fund going against the, against the general fund. To me, it seems like two decisions, one, I agree whatever he said, but one of the things that we're not going to decide tonight, that we go back and think about is, with the debt that has accumulated over time against the reserves of the general fund, how much of that should be written off? Something we can, we should do right now, we can all think, everybody needs to sleep on it, talk about it, ask questions about each other, all of us in the academy. But basically, that's, that's a just one-time decision. We might figure out what we feel is the appropriate thing to do. And then the second part is to make sure that it's part of the quarterly reports that we get, that projection of our, our reserve being, you know, being built up by any of these filter funds against the general fund that are in any way out of line, better or worse than local budget. And I think that's, that's an element that never, ever existed, ever, in the operations of the town. And this is a great opportunity to remedy that, and I think we've started, again, year and a half, go two years from...
What you think you have is a graph.
Yeah, and I think that's when we started to get these quarterly reports, and when we were able to make some decisions that had stopped the bleeding, and now we want to say, okay, stabilize the situation, where do we want to go from here? That's just, this is the best way I can do it, and I don't think we're going to do it in one night, that's for sure.
Can you, uh, one of the recommendations is, is the three-month operation of the town? Can you put a dollar, is there a dollar figure placed on that?
Three months, reserve.
It's on a proposed, in one of the...
And what is that about?
Three months of, of general fund as of right now is 1.5, $1,500,000.
That's three months.
Yes.
There it is.
But for that benchmark, shouldn't we use like a running average, like a three-year historical average? So each year, you would take your following two years' an average of those numbers, and that should really be our benchmark, so it'll, it allows for fluctuations and you don't get large swing. Do you agree?
General fund is pretty much, we don't have an increase or decrease of a big swing. It's 2% to 3% where they're going down and up, so we can, but it won't change much of a 1.5. There will be a thousandths.
Can I?
Good. So if we were to write instead of 1.7, we'd go with 3.4.
Okay.
And then we take the amount of money we're going to pay back to the general fund, and we keep sticking it in the reserve account in the sewer fund. Kind of accomplishes the same thing, right?
You're talking about leaving the full amount and not writing anything off?
Writing the whole thing off.
Writing the whole thing off?
The whole thing off, and the money you were going to pay back to the general fund every year?
Yes.
Sticking it in reserve account and keeping it in sewer fund.
Well, the one, can you say, I guess it would be...
So you, you getting rid of the loan from sewer fund, and then you're just going to create a transfer? It would have to be some sort of a policy in place that we can adhere to, the same thing what I'm trying to create with the memo.
Balance sheet's coming up in the same spot, even if you say you started on negative 70, then you're going to take back. We did the same, or I don't know if the council and the electric company did the same thing. Got way in the hole, spent, the expenses were way more than what revenue thought, the base thing did adjusted properly for whatever reason, and then they wrote the whole thing off. I think it was only like $600,000, $700,000.
It wasn't much, but it never got repaid.
Exactly, and we all learned.
And that's why I advocated for that specific repayment plan, so we can stick to it, we have a clear picture, and if we can transfer more one year or less and transfer second year, that's great, but we still have that plan that we're going to follow and commit to. That's all, that's all that memo is.
Well, I think, I think the amount that gets written off has to be whatever the majority of the council decides.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, what the positives and minuses are doing to all of us. There may be a downside to that.
Money we owe to ourselves, we're not, we're not in some sort of financial crisis. That's one thing that what people need to understand for all of us, is that what we are trying to do is come up with a policy so that we can predict, as we do each budget, what the reserves will look like at the end of the year, and not find out in the audit months later, which was...
Oh, I think, I think the quarterly reports we've been getting, I mean, fantastic. You've been keeping us up to date of, hey, we're doing okay, all the changes you all made that were pretty painful worked. Now, next 10 years, what's that going to be? But today, I understand where you're trying to get today and follow the directions of our third-party accountant doing something.
So the reserve policy going back to, yes, it's, I'm repeating myself, it's not something that's going to happen overnight, but it's something we need to look forward, and some of it we already have in place, which is great. But we just need to start working on making it a little better. And so with proposed of cutting half of the sewer and putting a 10-year repayment and assigning those transfers to help achieve that reserve policy, that's the overall picture that I'm trying to present.
The reason I don't think that's going to work is that would be fine if we went back and said, we're never going to increase the capacity of our wastewater system.
That's true.
And we were in that situation for a quarter, we were in that situation a quarter century, and it stifled this town, because that one thing, no growth, growth was not possible, even if it was greatly needed. And I think what we need to do is come up with a policy and a projection. What is, what is, because when we upgraded the wastewater treatment plan, I talked about spray irrigation, it was done so that it could be expanded at much less cost than if we just had done it as cheap as possible, but it's still going to be significant dollars, and we need to have a plan that will support that. The past is the past, but we need to make sure that as we move forward and we meet the needs of the future, that we can do it without getting in a financial bind to ourselves.
You cut me off because I said the second step would be is to actually work on a sewer plan and have the study done and see the five and 10 years projections. And yes, of course, we will be looking into the expansion. And potentially, I heard the conversation, need another water tower or something like that. So it's all in the works, but you have to have steps and plan and policy and procedures internally that you have to follow, but just saying, let's forgive the whole amount and just move on and see how we go, that's not going to work. That's what we try to do, too.
I think, I think you're, basically, we want to figure out what is a reasonable amount to pay back. And I think, maybe some members, barely, think that half is too much. Obviously, writing off something that's, you know, makes sense, obviously. But what is the right amount, and I think that's what everybody needs to have some time to think about, ask questions in between, and, you know, we'll put this back on the agenda for two weeks, and we'll see where we are then.
I also want to share, I mean, how are intent, are you? Again, to me, I want to speak personally. When I sat with Natalie a while back, and I asked the question, where's the money? I mean, this was an eye-opener to me, okay, and I think it was to you all as well. We ain't broke, I want you to know that, okay, we ain't broke. But I think we can do something a little bit differently. And what I also want to share for FY21, again, this, this is a, I call it a best guess, but between now and June 30th, 2021, we're on target this year to sell next season 200 EDUs, and that's $3.3 million, so...
Which we will not stay around forever, because EDUs are there to offset the costs that the town incurs related to growth.
That's right.
So that money will be used strategically based on where the growth goes and where, you know, and where it happens.
Now, I keep hearing we're not broke, and I know we're not broke, but all we really have, if, if an issue that's not budgeted came up, all we really have is $16,000. Let me, let me, let me finish, hold on. All we have is $16,000 without going into things that are already committed, and that is factual.
That's accurate.
So that's somewhat scary to me, and I think that having three months in that bucket for things that might come up that need to be acted on is wise.
I think we all agree with that.
I know, but I keep hearing that we're not broke, but we're not in as good of a financial position as we need to be.
We're not broke.
I agree.
I think we're all, we're all in agreement there, that we're trying to start, what should the amount be? And what should be, you know, basically, the decisions, and I don't think it can be made in one night, but I do think we can... but I do think we can put it all in done, but now that we have the facts, and I do think we have at least determined, what do we think is the prudent and responsible levels to accomplish?
And what I would also like to see, and Councilmember Purnell mentioned it, that this has happened before with the electric fund, a lot less of a write-off, but still happened before. So I think in this process, we also need to know what it's going to take to put things in place so that we can have early identification of borrowing before it actually occurs. Because you hit a really good, you hit a really good point. And when I saw this document, I had the same question that you did. What led to these numbers? And I went back to the budget, and I think that the descriptions were not as good as what would have led to a different outcome. So when I say that, in 26 or 2017's budget, 2018's budget, accounting, you look at the last four numbers of the budget, and it said prior year surplus for 3871, the final four numbers. It wasn't until 2019 that that budget could change to say contribution from reserve. And having, hold on, having those descriptors would have led to a very different outcome, I believe.
And you know what? I insisted that be changed because I think that's very misleading for many years, and it was misleading for whatever purpose. And it had to go. And I think it accurately describes that. And I put this right, I have my own beliefs about why that would never change and precede all of us by many years, by many, many years.
May I interrupt a little bit? The, I don't want to get into a county law on one, because I attended that, I don't want to do it again, okay? But part of the intention six months ago, bringing you all to the table, was part of this reason right here, okay? Your questions that you, the ones that attended, and you know what I'm talking about, the questions you asked, I think I answered. But the questions you asked, I will tell you point blank, taught me a lot. Because if you're confused, you made me confused, and I want to be unconfused. So I think it was a win-win. We're going to do it again.
But I did think that that was a misnomer and a misleading identification that been in this budget, in the town budgets for many, many years.
That was the first, that was the first question I asked. The first budget that I saw, I said, what does surplus mean? And and I know what surplus means in my household, but I wanted to know what surplus meant here. And I was told it's the difference between revenues and expenses. But that's not true in us.
I'm sorry, but I have to, just to say something. So on the presentations of the budget, when an approved transfer from reserve to cover the capital expense, or in my presentations over the past times, over the past six, seven years together, something was not clear. Why the question was not clearly brought up and say, hey, Natalie, what is exactly this point? When you're discussing the transfer from reserves and it's getting quoted to the surplus, and we don't understand the word surplus, then it should have been asked. And it was asked in the past, and it was changed, so we're moving forward. But we're kind of like really off the subject. This is just wording on the budget. Those transfers were discussed, approved, permitted, and spent on the items in the budget that were really necessary and needed.
And I hear what you're saying.
It wasn't misleading, it wasn't something hiding under the description.
I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, is that we're in a discussion about writing 1.7 million dollars off.
That has nothing to do with the surplus and transfers from particular reserves that we're talking about right now in the particular moment. The surplus has nothing to do with the sewer that we're talking about writing off. The sewer balance was carried by closing the ears and the sewer was operating on loss. It's two different items we're talking about, totally different items. The authorized and budgeted approved on the budget transfers were discussed during the budget. The sewer balance owing back to general fund is half, it's just totally different.
Okay, but I I'm struggling to see that. Because when we're presented with 1.7 million dollars to write off, and I go back to try and figure out what decisions were made that led to that borrowing in the first place, and I struggle to locate them, how do I answer that question?
Okay, how can I help you to answer this question? And the question was asked, how did it happen? It happened over the past many years of sewer fund operating not at the profit.
Right, but what I'm saying is that I sat up there in 2017 and asked the question, asked the question about surplus. I was given the answer that there's a difference between revenues and expenses.
Mr. Tendall, this has nothing to do with the sewer.
But that's what I'm trying, I'm trying to clarify where I'm where I'm seeing the two as the same. So then, when I see that code as a surplus, how does it get into the surplus category? And then how does surplus change the borrow from general fund? That's what I want to figure out.
You you mix in two things together, they're not mixable.
But they're the same budget code, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
They're not.
Okay. I do see a different one.
Can we discuss that another time and explain the difference better way maybe? I mean, it's just, we can see that. It's just, we're talking about two different things.
We can do that.
So we agree with that, with the point that we went to the board of commissioners next time, K-9, Nash, Jeff, Natalie, whatever, questions or background information or throw out ideas and bouncing against the financial wall. And then when we come back, let's see if we're, you know, have at least a fairly common agreement about what we need to make these decisions. So we have a policy in place, not just for the next year, but for going forward for many, many years. I think, I wish, I wish all of this had been done years ago, but it never happened. So it's time, and we have to make these decisions, we will. There's nothing enjoyable about any of it, but I think it's good, you know, we all agree. So I think we do, so just give it some thought, and let's just think about it. And certainly ask any of these folks whenever you need to have any.
For a question. When did you know that? Actually, didn't say it soon. Soon, I want to go, let's say, 30 days.
Yeah.
She's in a very bad schedule because of COVID. She wasn't able to travel to places and complete stuff that she's supposed to be on the schedule. So it's not just us, everybody is on hold because of that.
Well, just to your best, Jeff, whatever. We've come over with it our time, we're into a time when we need that time. And, you know, she knows she's going to be a great asset providing this information. But we can't make certain decisions if we don't have the dollars and cents that she has researched and related to our utility fees. Again, the park, did I call correctly, sewer, forward?
Yes.
Yeah.
Water and sewer, potentially looking into the some water. But just kind of talk about fiscal '21 budget, we still have a whole year to discuss that. It's not, it's not me or we're going to make a decision and increase or decrease the rates. It's just, we're going to talk about it.
You know, obviously, the safer, the better.
And she gets to the draft, though, allows it to be presented.
Thank you. All right. Where are we on the agenda? Here we go.
All of the information you have presented us, can you send it to me? Do you have little charts and?
For you, yes.
Because, because I'm not taking this paper.
I understand.
So I'll go ahead and go on. Certainly, we all agree, we want to, Agenda Item Six, okay? Agenda Item Six is discussion relative to the community parks and playgrounds, grant application, and Mary, are you going to?
Yes.
Walk us through this? This is for the application for the next fiscal year?
Correct. The way, as I, to give a little background, several weeks ago, several meetings ago, I informed you that our last application for community parks and playgrounds, which was for lighting at Henry Park Basketball Courts, was not awarded. And at that time, we had a very brief discussion about the basketball court lighting project versus the Stephen Deaconer Park permanent restrooms, essentially. I followed up with the liaison that we deal with, with Department of Natural Resources, Community Parks and Playgrounds Program, it's a lot of words. And she indicated that while there was, the applications themselves have been fine, the projects that we're submitting are just not what they are prioritizing at this time. They're prioritizing new development geared toward recreation, playgrounds, fun stuff. While the lighting project, I would certainly consider to be fun stuff, it didn't meet their, it's not to say that it doesn't meet their criteria, but it's not a priority. It's what they consider an enhancement to existing projects versus a new project. The restrooms, she flat-out said, restrooms just are not a priority. So at this point.
That's where you are.
Yeah, they are for everybody else, but but they're also not fun project, I guess. So at this point, the decision that the town needs to make is, do we keep submitting these applications? And there's nothing to say that the next one might not, might not be the winner, might not be the one that they decide to fund? Or do we backtrack and kind of refocus our energy elsewhere?
Am I correct or incorrect that we have submitted for the applications for the lighting and so, the questions have been, for how many years in a row?
We've submitted for the lighting, I'm not going to say in a row, but at least twice. We submitted for the Stephen Deaconer Park restrooms at least once. So that's a total of three years of of applications.
To the best of your knowledge, you know, obviously, your liaison and coordinator of the Parks Commission, are there other needs that may be more likely to be funded by the state that our parks could be enhanced by? I mean, because I know we've been working on these for some time, and if they're not happening, is there something else between?
I would say there is nothing that we are ready to move forward with right now. There are other ideas in the in the hopper, so to speak, but nothing that has been developed to the point where we can put together an application for three weeks from now.
Okay, now, is it the deadline, is the deadline for next application three weeks from now?
Yes, yes.
So, so, so if there's nothing in the hopper, we are presented with, with what do we reapply for?
What do we reapply for, or do we not apply this year and spend the next year developing a more viable project?
So, so my question is, why can't we reapply and also develop?
Certainly.
For next year?
Of course we can.
And I would recommend that we reapply for the restrooms.
For the restrooms.
Regardless of what they feel is important. I would like to think that the town of Berlin feels feels that giving our children and our parents a park, a permanent place to put a bathroom, is important to us.
Did that, did it set by consensus agreeable, or do we need a motion?
And we we have that 10% match in the budget, right?
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be necessary until the FY '22 budget.
Wasn't there something in this year's?
Four? A thousand dollars.
Okay, just a thousand.
Yeah.
So, I thought, having that one, I'll move that that will apply for the Stephen Deaconer Park restroom.
Okay, have a motion by Councilmember Burrell to apply this next, the current budget cycle for a grant for restrooms, permanent restrooms towards Stephen Deaconer Park. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
That's, it ends.
Great, okay, I will bring that application to you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Mary, the next item on the agenda is a motion approving the waiver of fees and approval of park use for a Woodford County Tennis Clinic. And if you will give us a little background of that, so the council can take an informed decision.
This is more or less the same application that they submitted in the spring, but then was canceled because of the pandemic. They really have just redone the dates.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'm making a motion that we award that same, I am to the, we're still telling the tennis clinic.
And we're basically going to waive the fees, the standard fees, which are not, not, but, okay. I understand you made it correctly, to waive the fees for park use by the Woodford County Tennis Clinic. And that would be, would that be this, later this summer?
September 15th would be, they will have two clinics on September 15th and 22nd, and then start dropping tennis on the Tuesday evenings following that up until October 20th.
Okay, everybody, square away on the motion, all in favor of the motion by Councilmember Brittenham? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Vote aye.
The record showed that it voted aye. All righty. And now, next, number eight on the agenda is the departmental reports by Councilmembers.
Mary, now, real quick, from, if you know, if you're familiar with Ivy, wanted me to share that she participated in a statewide Zoom meeting with the Maryland Department of Agriculture and other farmers, market managers. Life's Simple Pleasures is moving into the old PNC bank. Peach Ribbons are around there for Peach Day in Berlin. Peach Day is Saturday, August the 8th, 10th, 3rd, using our peaches for sale on live music. The shops and restaurants have peach-themed sales and dining options. The logo on the town trash cans, we had ordered, I mean, got the grant, received the grant, the main street trash cans, I think we shared with you, they came in. The, the town emblem was a sticky, which they, they have manufactured. I said that we did not do what we should have done. So do trash cans work on?
Manufactured, did we do?
Yes, yes. And the sad thing is, it's the same manufacturer of the trash cans that we have throughout the house. One would think that what you do for one, we do for all, but can you answer that question? Ivy wanted me to share that she had had a conversation with John Feger. The plan is still on their schedule anyway, has all town throwdown, which is scheduled for September the 12th, 1:00 PM.
That's decided?
Yes.
Yeah, what was the name of the business moving into your PNC?
Life, Life's Simple Pleasures.
What kind of stories?
I don't know.
Okay, now we answer, Elvis. All stay tuned.
Okay.
Do you want to share that the electric utility has been, obviously with the heat, the loads have been heavy, they're doing a lot of peach shaving. All of you will receive an invite from Alvin Cat for a ribbon cutting ceremony on September 9th. At the time, it's still questionable, but department heads and elected officials will receive that. It will be a lunch, a box lunch, nothing fancy, for a chance to see the new generator and the folks from Alvin Cat. They are commemorating some of their secret activities in from Alvin Cat.
And that's our, going to be our first diesel power.
That'll be your first natural gas.
Natural gas, excuse us.
Natural gas.
So basically, offline the diesel generators and replacing the natural gas as we can.
And that generator is scheduled to be online in the next couple, three weeks. From the planning department, excuse me, two public hearings will be held during the August 10th, Mayor Council meeting to consider the planning commission unanimous motions to rezone 115 Broad Street from then one light industrial to B2 Shopping District, that's the old Southern States. And also, the former Harley Davidson property from B1 Town Center to B2 Shopping. That, you know, the September 10th, or August 10th, excuse me, exactly. And then, the other big things happening now, we're probably 30% through. And then, the other big thing that's happened in town, we're probably 30% through the process. That's the recent streets. I've had a number of phone calls, I was on vacation. Two of them are sitting right here, worried about something that is going to be taken care of. Comments have been, so far on the streets have been very positive. And what's been completed as of today, Harrison Avenue is about 80% complete. Shaw Street is complete, Flower Street North is complete. The section of road in front of Henry Park area, that's two neighborhoods itself. And then the strapping on Flower Street needs to be completed. Also today, what was completed, you need to take a look at it. Take a ride to the plant, the wastewater plant. The model branch is being completed as well, it's a older, it's a structure out there. Tomorrow, we came circle and used parlay. And then in turn, there's a significant amount of concrete work on the Molin Hill, Commerce Street, pit adjacent to Black Smith. And then also, the few acres over Henry Park, they hope to be replaced.
Jeff, where did they go? They started all the blocks.
No, we started all Harrison.
No. I'm just saying, we started all the blocks last week. And they moved all their equipment to normal location, they're going to finish the blocks. How do you want to raise them up?
Well, the section that's in front of Henry Park, that was an add-on. And there's a number model was out there. And I know it's scheduled to be developed, I wanted, I wanted the wastewater plant done. I wanted it done last week. And I have a reason for that, for the operational end of what Jamie's got going on. So they'll be back to Flower.
So that portion down by Henry Park will be paid?
That's correct.
Okay, but then, what is your projection, because obviously, things can change. How long do you think of it?
Two to three weeks.
Two to three weeks?
Whether, this guy's route, I went here last week, and I know they were. And I went out there today, and as hot as it is, all that hot ass fall. And they're going to be demanded, I would rather go.
Oh, yeah, they did a good job.
Did the original proposal for Harrison Avenue go further than what it is now?
No.
Because it makes those other potholes seem really bad.
I heard of that. It will be fixed.
In the same time frame.
Yes, it didn't look that bad until now.
And I guess, just to...
Agree.
Because those potholes won't be just a patch.
So it will probably, those potholes are going to be built or whatever.
And what, what did the changes cost?
The roads that are being done, there's been no additional cost. The additional work that I'm doing on concrete, there is an increase on that. And I don't have a file estimate on that.
Can you add us now?
Yeah. And just so everyone knows, the one thing that we get on the RFP for this work, not only do we get prices for X Street, Y Street, this sidewalk, et cetera, but we also implement to a linear foot price. And should we do additional work, they would honor those prices. And you know, as well as I did the price that we got, doing this initially was $348,000. The next bidder was that full over after the bill. So you got some very good prices there. And they're doing good work.
I think that was a heck of an idea that you had put in there, that linear square foot so that you could do additional streets. That's grateful thing for us.
There's a big difference between the county...
Would you call it Big Bridge?
Can you call it Big Bridge?
Yeah. From Big Bridge to where we take over the county. If you ride from Flower Street to the county, it'll come up the other way. You can tell the difference, what it's surface. Because the county is doing, is rough. It's a rough line, and you got a smoother.
All the county did, all the county did on that section of Flower, they did not really pay at all, what they did, they sealed it, but it looks good.
That's all I have to add, okay? Mary, do you have anything? That one? All right, I don't have anything. Any comments from council?
I've got two things. When they include permits in his report, can you categorize as to what the report, what the permits are for?
Residential organs.
And, and I'm going to ask you to do a favor, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Can you thank Ivy for the 25-foot hug that I just noticed this morning?
I hear you. Sure she's watching right now.
I saw that this morning for the first time. I don't know where I've been or how long it's been there. But it really cheered me up when I saw that banner, that talking bird, 25-foot hug.
The world is?
It made me smile.
Yep, yep, it was really a good feeling I got this morning. So tell it.
Anyone else have any questions?
Just to let you know, Mr. Rurs wanted to make a correction that Peach Day is Saturday, August 1st, not the 8th.
Is that someone else?
It's always, first day of August.
Which is a Saturday. Okay, good. All right, I think that does it. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody.
Mayor, I'll run, I need to get some signatures.
Surely, surely.
Did you have a good question?